He's Brian.
Steve, how you doing?
I'm good. Why aren't you looking? You just came back from Florida.
Eh eh eh.
I've been in lockdown for two months. Hey, Justin.
Hey, Abe. Hey, Barry. You're looking good.
Hang on one second. Let me unmute myself.
We don't have a quorum yet, do we, Ali?
Yeah, yeah, we're...
Not yet, no. We... Our live streaming is working, though, so we're on.
Ali, I'm not going to participate in SP 2365, the first application of the public hearing.
Thank you for letting me know. I just texted you, Phil.
Hi, this is Josh here. I don't think you feel being on tonight.
Okay.
I think he made his go to his wedding and all that stuff. I think he's busy with that.
Oh, he had told me a while ago he would try to be here tonight if he could, and then I haven't heard from him since then. He's been very busy.
Yeah, I've heard from, uh, Yefil just before, so he's not going to be here. Um, so probably has Bruce Stern to chair the first public hearing item.
Okay.
That's okay.
When he gets back, we'll let him know. He was nominated.
Ali, another note?
Yes.
We had a meeting this morning with Gazarovski.
Okay, Abe, we're already live.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Moving positive, by the way.
Okay, good.
That looks like a good drink.
It's like a fancy seltzer with cats-
All right, you didn't have to get dressed up for us.
You invite me to the Minnesota building, I'll get dressed up.
Brian, is that exhibit in stores?
Uh, three exhibits were sent in. I have them on my board, because
What's the yellow?
I've been doing it that way for forty years now. I can't stop.
The yellow on the bottom, that's you, right?
Yes, that is the, uh, subject property.
Do we have a quorum yet?
Not yet. I heard from Jakey earlier today, so I assume he's coming, and I just texted Levy as well.
How many do we have? Uh...
Four.
Four?
Four right now.
Four, including me?
Yes.
So we do a mirror or two to start the first application? So who else do we have that we can get? The industrial tech, the Fuentes?
Uh, Mr. Fuentes is not really able to come unless there's an emergency. He has, uh, health issues.
So what else do we have on the board?
Um, I could call Dave. I just, I need... I started with the text messages. That was easier to do while I was on the video. We could call Dave Garfield or Moshi Ray- Either of them are available.
Mr. Herschel definitely not going to be here.
He has Shabbat breakfast.
He said, though, that it might be local.
On the may.
No problem. It was his suggestion, not mine. I agree with you, Bruce.
I just want everyone to know I have a new associate.
John, it looks like your new associate is, uh, slacking on the job over there.
He is. He's, uh, laying down on the ground.
I can't... Hello, what's he doing? Aww.
The only reason he's standing here as if he loves me is because I have food.
So, Kai and Sable's on.
Yeah, he's one of the four.
Any responses? Justin, you want to make a phone call?
I'm trying Dave Garfield. His home line is busy. He may be on the phone.
Mine took a few minutes to log in, like, uh, longer than usual, so maybe people are having trouble logging in.
It's because of all the riots.
You are used. I'm going to do my phone again.
Somebody else just joined.
The, uh, phone number to get in-
Has joined the meeting.
From my, uh, cellphone. Well, I can call it my home phone, same thing.
Who's on now?
Yes. And the meeting number. Oh, okay, fine. I'll be on. You'll hear me in a few minutes. Thanks for calling.
Is that Dave?
Uh, I think David's aware that he's on.
Hell, yeah. I think somebody needs to call Dave because he's already on.
He didn't know he was on. Dave, you there?
I'm here.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Did you get that email I sent you?
Um, I'm not sure. Did you send it?
Okay. Another time.
Okay, so we can go get the meeting started, I guess?
Oh, no, we're still only one, two... Well, we can get started on the second application, I suppose.
Well, let's start. Hopefully someone will call in. We'll start with the business items.
Okay. Hi, are you there, correct, Mr. Sable? I see that you're there. I just didn't hear from you yet.
Yes, I am. Have you heard me?
Super. Thank you. This is the June 2nd, 2020, public hearing for the Lakewood Planning Board. Um, I suppose we can start with flag salute?
Yeah. Your flag? All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Certification of compliance, Ali?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive notice of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
You have a roll call?
Remind, I will take a roll call. I just want to remind everyone to mute while you are not talking. We are getting some background noise. It's often when others are speaking, it echoes in your background. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Here.
Mr. Herschel. Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer. And Mr. Ratzick. Thank you.
Swear now, professional?
Mr. Vogt, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you will give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, do we have to have a quorum who could vote on the memorializations? Because I can't vote.
Well, why wouldn't we have a quorum for the memorializations?
I have a conflict with a couple. Or, yeah, a couple, the first two.
Well, under the circumstances with COVID, the difficulty, I suggest that, uh, Mr. Renner, uh, you, uh, uh, stay present so that we have a meeting, a quorum for the meeting, but that you not vote, discuss, or, uh, even appear during the, uh, this portion. So, uh, our meeting will continue. We have a quorum. That's, uh, what I think is appropriate under the circumstances. So, uh, Ms. Morris, you want to take the roll call for the, uh, resolutions?
Yes. First is SD 2399. It's an extension of a minor subdivision.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Flansbrough, seconded.
Seconded.
Mr. Garfield, seconded. Uh, I will take a roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Thank you. The second, SD 2404, is another extension.
So move.
Flansbrough motioned. Is there a second?
Second, Sable.
Mr. Sable, seconded. I'll take a roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Thank you. SP 2366, major site plan for a school.
I'll move it. Before, um, I, before I second it, uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Sable had a lot of comments that we incorporated into the resolution, so time, I just, did you get a chance to make sure that everything that we talked about was in there?
I did review it, and it looked good.
Wonderful.
If it looked good to him, then I'll second it. I'll second it.
And was it Mr. Renner that motioned that?
Mr. Sable made a motion to move it.
Thank you very much. And I'll take a roll call, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable, I couldn't hear you.
I said yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Flans-
Yes.
Okay, and SD 2436 was a minor subdivision for two lots.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Time, Sable, second.
Thank you. And I'll take a roll call, Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Stern.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I can't see if anyone has joined. I assume we still have the same five members. So we will continue with the public hearing. However, since we do not have a quorum for SP 2365, we will start with SP 2364, which is just near the Taurus Aaron. This is a major site plan for a gym located on Summer Avenue.
Do we know if we're getting a sixth member today?
We need a sixth member for the first one, yes.
Do we know if anybody's coming, or we're going to waste time with these professionals?
I spoke with Mr. Meyer earlier. Hold on, I also just got a text from Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Isaacson is stuck at work. I spoke with Mr. Meyer earlier. I assumed he would be here, but I haven't gotten confirmation. I'm hoping to hear back from him soon.
I spoke to, um, I spoke to Jakey before the meeting started. He said that he was also returning from work, and that hopefully he'll be able to lock down by seven, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So hopefully that will work for us.
So, uh, Terry, would you like to go through your, uh, letter?
We're talking about SP 2364. I'm reading from my letter dated May 1st. Uh, on page three, under submission waivers, we have a number listed, including a 21 traffic study, a 22 group of submissions to the county, uh, the B waivers for topo and contours and man-made features, uh, C6 plans and profiles, C10 shade trees, C13 EIS, C14 tree protection management, and C15 landscaping plan. Um, we don't have an issue with the traffic study on the basis that, uh, they're not adding kids. It's another amenity on an existing site. Um, we believe, uh, the project is exempt from motion county planning. Uh, if the board has a concern with that, we can always require proof of exemption as a condition of approval and granted. Uh, continuing on, um, we are generally okay with the site features. We may require additional survey. Um, in the vicinity of the gym that's approved, strictly for compliance purposes, we're fine with the survey, uh, for hearing purposes. Um, we're okay with the plans and profile waiver for hearing. Um, shade trees, we recommend installing trees in locations as indicated. Continuing on to page four, uh, we can support the EIS waiver since the site's developed. Uh, tree potential management, we support the waiver for hearing purposes, uh, since they will have to document compliance with the preordnance, uh, if approved. Um, and we recommend, uh, a landscaping plan, um, be provided, uh, for the gymnasium or comment, uh, and that can be done as a condition of approval and granted. That's it, Chairman.
Thank you. Is there, uh, sense to go along with engineer's recommendation to wait for submission waivers?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Uh, on the traffic, both the Lewis Avenue and Summer Avenue only lead out to Prospect Street, which is very heavily traveled. Do they plan on, uh, putting any type of signal to control the traffic at those intersections?
So I don't have the answer to that, Chairman. I assume we'll be giving testimony very shortly. And obviously, if the board's concerned with traffic, if upon testimony, um, we can always table the application and get more information.
Yeah, um, through the chair, if I may? Um, yeah, I think that, uh, you know, our engineer indicated that they're okay, uh, with, um, with the exemption of the traffic study due to the fact that the gymnasium will service the, um, the existing student body at the school, so they're not adding any more students. But to Dave's point, uh, you know, I'd also like to hear from the applicant, uh, you know, their testimony regarding the traffic, uh, um, and also confirming that, you know, that that's going to be the case. Um, but I mean, having said that, uh, I'd make a motion to go along with the, um, with the engineer's recommendations, um, as far as the law has got. Do you have something to the motion?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, Terry, did you see the letters of object? There was three letters from objectors that, um, Ali had sent to us, and one of them did concern traffic. So did you see those? And if so, what were your thoughts?
Yes, I did, Bruce. Um, I saw a couple emails which were referring more, from what I remember, uh, recommending not acting upon the design waiver requested for sidewalk along the frontage. Uh, there is a letter that was submitted by, by, by an attorney representing someone local. I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection was that if the board were to act favorably, that there be a condition that there be no events or nothing that would generate traffic due to your types.
Right. There was two emails and one letter. The two emails regarding sidewalks, and the letter was from an attorney from, I believe, a neighboring property owner, a commercial property owner, who was questioning that and making sure that there was no additional traffic being generated. So, I mean, I think the point justice-making is that this is, you know, these are just the students on site, which wouldn't generate any more traffic. But schools rent out their gyms to third parties, so I guess if we can make sure we have some testimony on that point from the applicant.
Yeah, I-
They're willing to-
I think that's a great idea.
Check the so- waivers, and then we could hear the test- Right.
So we should just put a check next to the waiver. We'll contingency, uh, grant the waiver subject to what the testimony is. For example, if they're not holding outside events, if they don't have bleachers for sporting contests, that kind of thing where they'd attract crowds, that is strictly for, uh, like a physical education and, um, activity for the students of the school. So we'll see what the testimony is.
But what hours will be in use? It won't exceed the school hours, correct?
And we got the testimony from the applicant. Yeah, through the chair. Let's get some testimony on the record so we can answer all these questions instead of just asking ourselves. So do we want, do we want to hold off on the submission waivers, or can we go along with engineer's recommendation and with your motion? And take care of the submission waivers, and then we'll get more to-
You know, I'm hearing mixed things. Why don't we just, uh, grant the submission waivers for the traffic study, and that'll be, uh, determined at the end of the case to determine if we can vote on the case or if we need the traffic study after hearing the testimony. That's what I would recommend. Is that satisfactory to the rest of the board?
I'll repeat my motion to go-
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have, uh, are we all in favor of the submission waiver? If you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any objectors to going along with it?
Repeat again, please, the, um, motion.
The motion was to grant the submission waivers as per the engineer's recommendation. Now, of course, we're going to hear testimony about how this gym is going to be used before we use, before we approve the gym.
Yeah. Personally, I would like to hear the questions answered before, uh, I say yes. I'm going to have to abstain on this.
Okay, so Mr. Garfield, would you go along with all the other submission waivers aside for the traffic study?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe let's do it that way. Justin, um, just to get a majority of the board together. Look, I, I, I made a motion. We can always, we could, I, John can correct me if I'm wrong, but we reserve the right to, uh, these are only submission waivers. We reserve the right to change, uh, from what- Okay, so let's have a roll call, because I didn't hear who was throwing it again. So based on your motion to go along with all the submission waivers, we have a second-
Yeah, and we, and we reserve the right, we reserve the right to go back on it.
Yeah, Justin asked me about that. We could, the board can absolutely, at the end of the case, say you're not satisfied. You want to see a traffic study because based on the proofs and the testimony, you know, you're reconsidering that waiver issue. So this is just going forward at this time, and at the end of the case, if you're not persuaded, or if you feel you need something, we'll discuss it at that time.
All right, Ali, let's do a roll call on this motion.
All right, motion to submission waivers in accordance with the engineer's recommendation. I'll take a roll call, Mr. Garfield.
I'm going to abstain on this yet.
Okay, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to continue, Chairman, uh, on zoning, page four. Uh, as indicated, comment one, the parcels in the M1 district schools are a permitted use. Comment two, front yard setback variances are required for the gym, uh, fifty-two feet. I'm sorry?
We're getting feedback from someone, Terry. It's, you can ignore it. I don't know who it is.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. Thanks, Ali. Uh, comment two again, front yard setbacks are required for the gym, fifty-two feet from Railroad Street, uh, Street, and front yard setback from, uh, from Summer Avenue. Uh, the industrial commission can grant a partial waiver on the primary front yard setback variance. Comment three, we're going to have to have testimony, uh, to justify the accuracy of the parking. Uh, we'll have that shortly. Just a reminder that schools in the M-zone, M1 zone requires three spaces per classroom. Uh, and similarly, uh, we're going to have to get testimony on, uh, the functioning of bus loading, loading, uh, and stacking as applicable. Continuing on, um, variances required from subsection eighteen nine oh three MAD, requiring recreation and playing areas to be fully fenced. Uh, the basketball courts currently are not fenced. Uh, variances required, um, for use of a parking area as, uh, a recreation and play area. Uh, I believe that's it under the relief. Continuing on, page five, under design waivers, a design waiver is required from the improvement of surrounding rights of way of Railroad Street and Lower Avenue, including curved sidewalk and street trees. Uh, design waiver is required from sidewalk along Summer Avenue. Um, there is no sidewalk elsewhere, but they still require a waiver. Um, and input is recommended from the Lakewood Industrial Commission as well. Uh, waivers required from street trees, as well as shade tree utilities along Summer Avenue. Uh, no lighting plan has been provided at this time. That would have to be waived, and no landscaping has been provided at this time. That would have to be waived. That's all the relief, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeffer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, to the applicant. Just to go over a quick, uh, few of the questions, um, this application is, as you indicated, is for a gymnasium. Um, currently on the site, uh, the existing students, there are some outside basketball hoops that they use. However, uh, when there's inclement weather, they have nowhere to play, uh, during the school, uh, school hours. So this is just to, for the existing school, where this is not going to allow them to have any more traffic come to the site. It's not going to have any more students come to the site. It's not going to be used, uh, during the school hours. We rent it out for any of the use. Uh, I did check with Robert Kanerek, uh, the dean of the school, to confirm as to, you know, will they be renting it out? Because the only time it may be used outside of school would be like on a Saturday night, which would not cause any, any, um, uh, obstruction to the businesses surrounding, uh, the school. Um, as far as the location of it, uh, this is, this location is the, was a detention basin for the property which has, which is no longer in use. They upgraded to an underground recharge system. Um, so the area, we're not talking about taking away an area of land, um, that was being used for a different purpose. Um, I have Glen Lines, uh, ready to be sworn in to address it if that matters. Um, but again, just, just so the board is clear, this is not go, our testimony is that it's not going to be used, uh, to rent it out for daily uses for other schools, or to have events during school time. It's going to be solely for, uh, gym activities for the existing school. Um, and if there is something there that's going to be used, it would be after hours on like a Saturday night. Uh, at this time, John, if we could swear in, uh, Mr. Lines?
Mr. Lines, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you will give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And you're offered as an expert in engineering and planning?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you recognize him based on his numerous appearances and his stint as the township engineer? Oh, this is, I don't see anybody moving. Uh-oh.
I'm here. I don't know. I don't think we'll, Mr. Lines. Okay, Mr. Pfeffer, would you like to have?
If you can, just walk us through the application and then walk us through Terry's review letter.
One second.
Was that, everyone kind of froze up for a second? Jillian, do you have a connection? Jillian, what?
I do have a connection, yes.
Okay, take over. I'm getting blocked out.
So, Glenn, you've been sworn in. If you can, walk us through Terry's report and the actual application itself.
Okay. As you had started, it's an existing school building with associated parking and located on Summer, the end of Summer Street. Go to the north side, which is the top of the screen. That's Railroad Avenue runs along that side of the property. That's an unimproved roadway in both directions. So, Summer Avenue just ends at our northerly property line. And the other right away, we stacked up to Lewin Avenue, right?
Right. Excuse me, Mr. Lines?
Yes.
John requested that I respire you in. I think when he was doing it, some people didn't hear it. So, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna respire you in really quick. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. You can proceed.
Glenn, I'm sorry, just one more, just to confirm with Mr. Renner that Glenn is accept, his testimony is accepted as a?
Yes, and I heard everything the whole time, so I'm okay.
I did as well.
Thank you.
Mythic, Mythic, fine. If you can bring your microphone closer to him. That'd be great. I'll move my other screen. And then Lewin Avenue is located to the rear of the school. That's another unimproved street. It's used for access to a building that is on the west side of Lewin Avenue, but it's basically an unimproved, largely improved street at this time. The proposed gymnasium will be to the northeast corner in the front of the property. Again, it's located in a low area that was previously detention basin. It is to the right-hand side of one of the entrance driveways, going to the variances. The existing school is, requires a variance, I believe it's ninety-seven feet from the property line. And the proposed gym is fifty-two feet from Railroad Avenue, which is, again, an unimproved road right away. And the, it's ninety-five point six two feet from Summer Avenue. Now, the whole frontage of the property between Summer Avenue and the gym, there's about a fifty-foot stand of trees between the curve line and the, and the parking lot and the side of the gym. So, it's a little buffered from the road. Again, I believe when this was originally approved years back, they did approve the variance, you know, the, the Industrial Commission had no objection to the location of the building. As far as parking, we have three hundred and seventy-seven spaces, which would allow us to have a hundred and twenty classrooms. School has a minimum, has at least sixty classrooms with about twenty associated offices, which is around eighty. I don't have the exact number in front of me. I apologize for that. But we do have excess parking and we will demonstrate that in resolution compliance. We do not need a variance for that. Question, Chairman, if I could. Glenn, that's based upon the three spaces per classroom requirement, correct?
Yes, at the three per classroom. There's three hundred and seventy-seven existing parking spaces on the property.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
So, we exceed what would be required even at three per, three per classroom. Number four was the bus unloading and loading. The existing pattern is that the buses come in on the suddenly driveway around to the back of the property. This is a long sidewalk in the rear where Ally's pointing at now. Buses come through, stack there, unload, and then go back out the northerly drive.
So, the operation complies though, is that correct?
It's an existing, that's an existing pattern. There's existing rooms to stack the buses that come to the property.
All right.
That doesn't make sense. The buses coming probably on the northern, no, you're right, south driving, sorry.
Yeah. There's more room if, if there's a bus or two that don't fit in the unloading area, they can stack on the south side of the building. The traffic pattern is clockwise around the building. Again, some existing basketball courts that are in the?
Yes, I heard, I think Davis trying to say something?
Yes. The question on, you brought up earlier, sort of side bit, on sidewalks. This is an industrial area. You will have buses along there and these are children. And I feel the waiver on these sidewalks is a question. It's either do it now or wait till, hopefully no one gets hurt, but it's gonna have to be done eventually. And I'd rather see it be done at the building and the king of all this.
Mr. Garfield, when we get up to that, right now, we didn't, the engineer didn't discuss yet the waiver for the sidewalks. So, when we get up to that, we'll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or Mr. Lines, go, just continue.
That's okay. In the variance for fenced in playing areas, the gym will allow us to bring the basketball nets that are in the parking lot into the building. That'll have the ability for basketball. So, the, you know, the temporary nets that are in the parking lot now won't be used in the future. So, we don't need that variance either.
Temporary basketball hoops will not be used?
Not the ones that are in the parking lot now.
So, those will be removed? Mr., your lawyer, Mr. Pfeffer, mentioned that the hoops are staying and the gym is only for indoors whenever it rains or the condition of the weather?
So, what I was indicating was that right now, the hoops are outside and when it's raining, there's nowhere for them to play. The hoops are on the area of the parking lot that, that's out there. There's a requirement to fence in any outdoor play areas. When they have this gymnasium actually built, they'll be able to have the gym inside without any issue. Right now, when there's rain, there's nowhere for them to play at all.
Right, but the gym is only providing two hoops, two basketball hoops. The parking lot currently has probably twenty of them.
As far as how many hoops are gonna be inside the gym, I'm not sure, but I'll give them?
It says, it says two hoops. It has two ceiling mounted basketball hoops.
Oh, are you?
Oh, it has more. It has more. One, two, three, four.
Yeah, they normally don't, they normally have extras on the sides. They play?
Yeah, they have a total of ten.
Yes, at ten.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, the question is, are you requesting this variance to be granted?
Correct.
Okay, so the answer is that, you know, you're gonna have to take it down to comply or fence it in. Okay.
And then, it's the same thing about you can't use a parking lot for players.
Mr. Lines, what, excuse me, Mr. Lines, what age are these students?
Um, I believe they're up, up to eighth grade.
Up to eighth grade, Mr. Pfeffer, can you confirm that, what the grades are?
I believe that is correct. I'm gonna confirm it in one minute.
All right. So, whether, whether it's for, to eighth grade or high school, Mr. Lines, in your experience as a planner, have you been to a lot of public schools that don't have a gymnasium very similar to this for?
Yes, this would be a typical gymnasium. Normally, in a, in a public school, you have, you have two, two gymnasiums this size, one for boys, one for girls. This is, this is a typical sized gymnasium, a little school court basketball. But, you know, when they're in for gym class, they break up into smaller groups and as?
They do whatever they do. So, this is a very common amenity for a school, isn't it? I mean, this is not anything out of the ordinary.
That is correct. And it's also, I did confirm it's on the kindergarten through eighth grade.
Okay, could we continue through the letter, Mr. Jackson, if you don't mind? I just want to get through the letter.
Of course. I'm sorry, Mr. Renner.
I'm sorry. We are on design waivers. Yes, we are requesting waivers for doing any improvements to Railroad Street and Lewin Avenue. They're, they're not improved streets. There's really no reason for any curved sidewalk, street trees, design waiver.
Mr. Garfield had a, had a question that was concerned.
This is the next one. Currently, there aren't any sidewalks along Summer Avenue. We did not propose sidewalks because there is a very substantial landscape buffer in front of the school, buffering the school from the traffic and so forth on Summer Avenue. There's no other sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on the, on the industrial side of the street. There's no sidewalks on the next property going out to Summer Avenue. If we put sidewalks in, there's, it's just inviting kids to go out and be in front of the property when they should be sitting on the property.
Glenn, is it your testimony that the landscape buffer that's there today blocks off kids from wandering out of the property?
Yes, and I believe there's a fence there also. Doesn't show up very well, but there is a fence along the front of the property. So, we'd have to take down trees, move the fence, put in sidewalks that have no extension. The property next door is a warehouse facility that does, I think right now, they have, it's like a Amazon fulfillment type building. So, there's, so pedestrian traffic there. There's no sidewalks on, when you get out to the county road. So?
Mr. Flansbrough?
I don't feel they're necessary. I feel it's better the way it is. I'm sure if the board feels that sidewalks are necessary, we would, we have no, would have no objection.
Mr. Flansbrough, would you know what the Industrial Commission's tactic is on this?
I don't recall this, I don't, you know, I just don't recall this being discussed at the Industrial Commission. So, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I look at the Industrial Commission's position in general, in the, in the industrial park in off New Hampshire Avenue was, was, you know, initially that the position was no sidewalks, but now, you know, we've come to, we've come to an understanding for, you know, some like walking asphalt type of paths. I'm not sure if this, you know, Summer Avenue is different than the industrial park off of New Hampshire Avenue. There's a lot more traffic on New Hampshire Avenue and, you know, this, so this is kind of a different area, but I don't recall this being discussed at the Industrial Commission.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garfield, you had a comment on this?
What about on railroad, on the road there?
There is no rail, there is no road on railroad.
Okay, that's just paper?
Paper street.
Okay.
Same with Lewin.
Where does the, in other words, where does the entrance to come to this area? If Lewin and Summer are not really normal streets and the railroad is a paper street, how do you get to this?
No, I never, Summer is, is the paved road that comes in. It extends out to the county road. So, that's the one, that's the one entrance in and out of this property. And in our property, our northerly property line, it is a dead end street. So, cars are traveling at high rates of speed or else they'd be driving into the railroad. So, we, you know, we're really the last driveway on our side of the road.
Is there a sidewalk on Lewin?
There's nothing on Lewin.
Nothing on Lewin?
Nothing but, nothing but trees.
Glenn, you don't have a, give an aerial or something or can you pull up a satellite map, a Google Earth map or something like that? So, maybe the board can get a better picture.
If I may add a couple items to your timetable.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, number one, July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning board approved for, I forgot the name, SP number two-two-nine-five, and we require them to put sidewalk on Summer Avenue. So, there, we are getting half, if that's ever being built, for, they have divided a lot, something they had, I don't remember exactly. And we did require them to do sidewalk on their half on Summer Avenue. So, I think this, this property is the only, on the west side of the property. So, I think this is gonna finish Summer Avenue to get sidewalk. That's number one.
Mr. Sable, with that, I spoke of just that one. The applicant would have no objection to putting the sidewalk in Summer Avenue in front of the property. We have no objection.
Okay, good. So, that's, that's great news. We can move on then.
Thank you. I forgot about that property. I'm sorry. Yes, we proposed sidewalks on that property, two or three years ago when we were in?
Pretty, exactly, eleven, two years.
Okay.
Okay.
You were right.
Pretty significant.
That provides sidewalk.
Throughout the entire project, please.
What was that?
On the summer frontage, you mean, right?
On summer, yes. We have no objection on summer.
On summer, on summer.
No objection.
And the other, the last two waivers were for submitting a lighting plan and a landscaping plan. We're not proposing any changes to the parking lot lighting. It works, works fine now. It was previously approved and it's operational. And as far as landscaping, we aren't proposing any landscaping. If the board, you know, wants, wants us to take down trees in the front and put in shade trees, we could then give you, provide a landscaping plan. It's not necessary.
Excuse me, Chairman? The chairman says Terry.
Let's go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, as far as lighting goes, since they're adding a new gym, which is gonna be used at night, and I'm assuming you're going to have some pedestrian access in and out, I would recommend that they provide a lighting design in the vicinity of the proposed gym and parking lot as a minimum. It may be giving us the original design and showing that that still works. I'm guessing you probably have blind areas that you're gonna need to have some new, new lighting. But I would recommend that they give something here in compliance.
We have no objection to that. We submit that to Terry. If the board votes for approval, we would submit that during resolution compliance.
Okay, thank you, Adam. And then landscaping obviously is up to the board. I know that there was testimony that you have buffer in front. I don't know whether the board wants anything around the perimeter of the gym or not.
Okay, thank you. I think this covers the waivers under the conditions on the letter. Eddie, you know, let's open it up to the public now. Is there anyone from the public that sent in any comments?
Yes, we did receive comments from the public. I will share them on my screen. I think that's easiest. Mr. Jackson, you can see all three. I don't think we had any issues with them. It's gonna take a minute for my screen to open it up. It's very slow.
Mr. Chairman, while Ally's getting those open, I know it's open to the public. If I could just ask Glenn one question. Glenn, I just want to make sure, are there any other items in the review letter? You have any issues that you can address?
No, I was just, I was just looking through that. It's, no, we, we can comply with the rest of the conditions and address them during resolution compliance.
Thank you.
All right, I have the first public comment up, which is from? All right, I have the first public comment up, um, which is from Mayor Stern on Capitol Lane across Prospect Street, I believe, um, he says, I am writing this to the planning board for public comment regarding SB 2364, the school is located at 500 Summer Avenue, they are requesting a waiver from providing sidewalk on Summer, I am against this waiver, I believe a sidewalk is necessary, I live across the road and I often see many students from this school who are walking on Summer Avenue, the adjacent lot at the corner was approved under SB 2295 for Benos Harasa, and that school provided a sidewalk along their frontage of both Prospect and Summer, I believe it's in the best interest of safety and welfare of the students that tourist errand also provide a sidewalk with their current application, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The one is similar, it is from Dovi Schwartz, also Capitol Lane, please give this letter to the planning board as public comment regarding SB 2364, I requested board condition the approval on the applicant providing a sidewalk on Summer Avenue, as is required, there are many students that walk in this area and along Summer Avenue, and they should have a sidewalk to walk on, the adjacent lot was approved under SB 2295, and they will provide a sidewalk along their frontage of both Prospect and Summer, there is no reason tourists errand should not provide a sidewalk, thank you.
Thank you.
And the third was the email, the letter from an attorney, which was discussed previously, it's in its entirety on my screen here, it is from Akisano Law Offices, signed by Francis Akisano, was copied to the applicant's attorney, so they did see this, and Mr. Santo Cisatti, who um, perhaps is involved in the um, question, um, do you want me to read this, Mr. Jackson? Or? I'll just read it, it's easier than doing it incorrectly. Dear ladies and gentlemen, please be advised, I represent Excel Corporate Park, the owner of Lot 1, Block 409, a property which currently suffers adverse effects as a result of the school operation located across the street from our property, there is currently an enormous traffic problem on Summer Avenue, occasioned by the operation of school buses servicing the school, someone's echoing, which make it extremely difficult, Tom, can you be up a minute? Never mind, I got it. Which make it extremely difficult for our tenants to enter and exit the leased spaces in our buildings because of the congestion which they call, it is safe to say that the addition of the gymnasium facility will only exacerbate this problem if any additional traffic is generated during the times that our tenants are doing business, therefore, on behalf of my client, we object to the granting of the site plan approval and any associated variances or waivers sought, unless the board attaches conditions to any such approval assuring there will be no increase in traffic during our regular business hours weekday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. If the school intends to schedule events in the gymnasium which generate additional traffic, those events must be at times at which traffic on Summer Avenue is at a minimum, certainly no event should be scheduled during those times when school buses are operating on the street, such a condition should be attached to the grant of any waivers or variances on this application, thank you for your consideration, Mr. Francis Akisano.
Thank you, did we receive anything else during the meeting?
Did not.
Okay, um, so I'll close it to the public now, and Mr. Pfeffer or Mr. Lines, do you want to address these letters, I think they were addressed, we can address them one more time?
So, so real quick on the first, the first two dealing with the sidewalk on Summer Avenue, again, the applicant has no objection to complying with the sidewalks um, along Summer Avenue, so I don't think those are concerned um, anymore, the third letter.
Yes.
One quick question, where do, you mentioned buses before, uh, where would the buses, would they be able to pull in, or uh, do we need a cutout area along Summers for them to pull over?
No, so Alex, you, very good, so where do they pull in from, show where they pull in from where Summer is.
So the buses are pulling in on an access drive on the southern side of the property, and they pull all the way around behind the school to load and unload.
Okay, we don't need a cutout area?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeffer, while we're talking about the sidewalk in Summer, going, when we install the sidewalk to the, to the site on Summer, we need some sort of sidewalk inside the property leading to the building, can we do somewhere on the south side by the entrance, somewhere within?
I, I don't think it's finished, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Lines, from an engineering perspective, where he could, where he thinks he could put that?
Safely route the kids to the school.
Yeah, we will definitely provide a safer route, except for the sidewalk to the building. I, I'm not sure, I think that, I think the northerly side's a little steeper, I think where Ally has the arrow right now, I think that would be the better side to do it on, we will provide access from the street to the school.
And that's the better side also, because that's closer to um, the main road, to the county road, right?
Yes, and it keeps, that'll also keep the kids, if they are walking in, from walking in the driveway.
Perfect, can we do a speed bump over there, and that, on only that, well, there's no buses going in, that side does not have buses, the buses go around, around the property. That's only there that the school can look?
No, they come in, they come in on the south side and then they go back out on the north side.
Right, so that, that portion where that 25 cars are, that east, east side of the building, that portion does not have any busing.
Yeah.
Maybe you can put a normal walkway in between somewhere, just to get them a little safer, it's a lot of kids.
Young kids.
Great. I would say, I don't think the applicant has any objections, I, I would just ask that maybe Glenn work with, with Terry, uh, again, should the board vote for approval, to work with him to get some extra safety and walkways for the children.
Thank you very much, and around, in front of the gym room, in front of the gym uh, building.
A walkway?
We, we have, we have around the building, but going from the building, from the main building to the gym room, and to the pool, and to the pool, like in front of the trailer, can we extend it somehow?
We can put a, we, we can put a crosswalk on the table, a painted crosswalk.
All right.
Is that okay? We'll work that out with Terry, I have no problem addressing it to Terry's satisfaction.
Thank you very much.
Just, so if I could just go back to, so address Mr. Akisano's letter, uh, again, the testimony we've given is that this is not going to generate any additional busing to the site during the hours of, of the nine, of seven to five, uh, again, this is for existing students, it's not going to allow us to have any additional students on site, um, the only proposal we would probably do of, of any additional cars coming to it would be during the, during on a, maybe on a weekend or Saturday night, um, where businesses are not uh, in operation, uh, otherwise, it's solely for school use, um, and we would again ask that the uh, waiver be confirmed um, from having a traffic study completed.
Okay, I think, thank you, any other comments from any board members?
Through the chair?
Yes.
No, Adam, um, the letter asks that it be a condition of granting the waivers, you were stating that, you know, you're, you're going to comply with it, but are you okay that that's a condition, I don't know how much legal effect that has, but are you okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, the condition that it won't be used for outside use between the hours of seven to five during business days, we have no objection.
Okay, so let's put that in there.
Perfect. Any other comments from any board members? Any questions?
This is going to be an area with a lot of kids, uh, are there uh, possibilities to keep garbage uh, cans or something to collect rather than the kids throwing them down?
I believe there's already a garbage enclosure, and one of the, the comments in Terry's letter uh, indicated, um, in a second, let me just get to it, there was a comment about it, we said we would comply with uh, Terry's comment.
A little further up, is that the, at the northern entrance?
Yeah, and Terry asked.
For the garbage now.
Okay.
I'm just looking for the comments.
Pass.
Yeah, comment five, um, Terry asked for a full desire proposing trash recycling enclosures throughout the site, we made a condition of approval, and we already indicated we would comply with the rest of the letter, um, so we will comply with that.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else from any board members?
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on this application?
Mr. Sable will make a motion with the following, just go over a couple items, not giving a variance for fencing in the basketball, we're going to put siding, sidewalk, I'm sorry, sidewalk throughout Summer Avenue, we're going to provide a better lighting solution, lighting situation, uh, not business hours and no rentals, and what's going on with the trailers, I don't know, I guess that's gonna have to be removed, the storage trailers.
Storage trailer, I'm sorry, where are the storage trailers?
They're where the gym is going.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify, you said no rentals, again, if the school wanted to use it on a Saturday night, um, I just want to make sure there's no restriction on, on that rental, but during the school hours, we would agree, again, can the hours of seven to five, it's solely for school use?
Correct.
Okay, so thank you.
I'll make a motion on that to approve the application.
I'll second, Mr. Jackson. Okay, thank you, there's a motion, it's like, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Garfield, yes, thank you, Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Finesball?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have to vote on the submission waivers as well?
Um, I'm sorry, did your motion intend to grant?
They, they were already voted on at the outset, and, and the, the determination was that we would revisit them, so by the motion approving the application, the inherent is that, is that the submission waivers were satisfactory, and that the proofs submitted were enough for the application to pass.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I will note that Mr. Meyer is here and ready to step in for the next application, um, if Mr. Stern stepping down, that's still, that's with five board members.
Yes, I'm ready to step out, so everybody have a good night.
Thank you, and Mr. Stern, you're willing to take over as chair, I believe?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, thank you.
You can call me if you need, if you need help on the approval of bills later on.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
So, this is SP, sorry, I'm delaying, 2365 from 140 East Kennedy Boulevard, the major site plan for a mixed-use building, building located at 140 East Kennedy.
So, Ally, I do not have Terry's report, um, I do have the submittals by the applicant, but I do not have Terry's report, maybe we could pull that up for everyone.
I do have three exhibits from the applicant.
Terry, why don't you take it from here, walk us through your report?
Will do, Chairman, I'm looking at a April 27th review, uh, top of page three under submission waivers, the applicant's request waivers including submission of some county planning, uh, top of contours and man-made features within 200 feet, those profiles of utility layouts in the IAS, uh, as indicated, um, we, we, we can support the waiver of the proof of submission, uh, based upon the completion of the traffic study which the county is going to review, uh, we can support the B waivers based upon the informational plans, uh, regarding plans and profiles, we have sufficient information, uh, on the revised plans, uh, and finally, we support the waiver of the site, as just previously announced.
Terry, when you say revised plans, what was revised?
Revised plans included additional utility information, um, that addressed our concerns in regard uh, to, to water and sewage.
Excellent, okay, please continue.
Uh, that's our submission waiver, uh, recommendations, Chairman.
So I guess, Ally, we vote on that?
Uh, typically, you ask if there's a motion to support the submission waivers in accordance with the engineer's recommendation.
Do we have such a?
I'll, I'll make that motion, Chairman, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, and we have a second.
Mr. Sable, thank you, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can continue.
Very good, continuing on under section two zoning, uh, our comment two, uh, based on our review of the architectural plans and the site plans, uh, front yard setback variances appear to be required, uh, as indicated, uh, sag your set, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, zoning number one, you write retail activities are permitted, how about office? This is a mixed use, correct, is it a mix of office and retail?
Uh, I believe so, I believe they are permitted as well, uh, we're going to get testimony to that effect on the unit next short.
Okay.
Um, continuing on to page four.
Terry, Terry, to be clear, this is the old Kentucky Fried Chicken?
I believe so, Chairman.
Okay, yes, it is, okay.
Yeah, yes, the old, the, the, the old KFC site, uh, block 105, lot five.
Got it, okay, please continue.
Okay, uh, continuing on zoning on page four, uh, side yard setback variances required, uh, 10 feet proposed, 30 feet required, uh, maximum building coverage is required as well, uh, 30.5% proposed, 25% allowed, uh, again, we're going to ask for testimony, uh, either justifying the adequacy of parking, uh, per UDO standards, or uh, the applicant will have to seek a variance, uh, that is it, under zoning relief, uh, and then continuing on under design waivers, design waivers are required from providing street trees as well shade trees and utility usements.
The parking, you missed parking, five, number five on the zoning.
No, I did talk about that, I said, we weren't sure whether uh, a parking variance is required or not, and we've asked the applicant, uh, to give testimony either justifying that parking meets UDO standards or identifying the deficiency, uh, which the board would have to act on.
Thank you.
All right, uh, design waivers for number three, uh, against street trees, uh, as well shade trees and utility usements, uh, and design waivers also required from landscape buffering. That's our comments, Chairman.
Okay.
So Chair, um, Ally, what's next?
Um, we will have the applicant's professionals sworn in, I'm not sure who's still on the call representing the applicant.
Mr. Penzer, what witnesses do you have? You're on mute, Mr. Penzer, you have to.
I got it, you're good, you're good now.
Can you hear me? Okay, my witness is Mr. Flannery, and Mr. Sable, what I said before, I didn't realize I was a mute, I apologize, our position is there is no variance on parking, Mr. Flannery will discuss that as well, for the record, Abraham Penzer appearing on behalf of the applicant, and very briefly, what's recalled before I introduce, uh, Brian, I just want to tell you a little bit about the history of this area, some of you have talked about, this is the famous Kentucky Fried Chicken area, where there was for years, many, many years, complaints of smell of chickens in the area, and people were complaining, this is also the area where there were several murders there, and this is a chance that the township committee has been looking in this area for years, do an urban renewal, this is the last area in Lakewood, which is really the outskirts, but it's really now become downtown Lakewood, over the years, when they were looking for stores, and my client has the vision and the guts to try to come forward and put stores in this area, it fits it like a glove, and you'll hear our testimony, and hopefully we'll persuade you as to why the design that we proposed would fit in very good for the area, so without further ado, I would ask that Brian Flannery be sworn in.
Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give before this board with the truth, all truth, nothing, truth?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner.
Mr. Stern, do you recognize him as an expert in those areas?
I sure do, even though he doesn't have a tie on.
So, this application, as was indicated, is for a one-story retail building, I, I don't know where the mixed use came in, we're looking for retail, uh, I have exhibits which have been submitted, the one that's on my easel right now is of the tax map, it shows where the property is, and this is a very interesting avenue and I'm, area, and I'm sure all the, the board members are familiar with this, as Mr. Penzer indicated, it's the uh, old Kentucky Fried Chicken site, which had some history to it, but it's the property that's in between two very busy uh, county roads, Kennedy Boulevard and County Line Road, uh, as, as you go to the east in that same corridor between those two roads, the township changed it to an office transitional, because they, they'd rather have office-type uses in that area, and again, as you go to the west, once you cross Madison Avenue, again, it's office transitional, but this particular area. But this particular area, it's associated with this, uh, B3, uh, development. It's heavily developed and, and retail, um, stores is, is what's appropriate for this area. As Abe indicated in the, in the past, based on the Smart Growth Plan, the township made a conditional use for properties along County Line Road that would encourage them to develop as neighborhood commercial sites so that the high-intensity residential development that we have in this area has a place to go where they can walk to as part of a smart growth uh, that everybody doesn't have to get in their car and drive to where they're going. So this is an area that clearly the township targeted for retail. Uh, the ordinance allows us to build much higher and, and several floors. We're going for a one-story retail which fits this site like a glove. Now, the, we're asking for some big variances on front setback, uh, but the front setback variances are generated by the hardship of this property. Normally, I only talk about the C2 variances where the benefits outweigh the detriments. And, and I think when I finish my testimony, you'll agree that the benefits outweigh the detriment. But this property is also impacted by a hardship that per the ordinance should need a 50-foot front setback on both sides, which would take away half of the property. Um, the, uh, normally a property has a front setback, two sides and a rear. This property has two fronts, no rear, and two sides. Uh, the property, in order to, to, uh, meet the setbacks as best as possible, would require a building in the middle and a parking lot on each side. And, and that's what you have to the west with the Good Friend Electric's, uh, site and, and the Stitch and Sew. And it's really not a good utilization of the property. Um, so what we're proposing is that we would ask for the front, uh, setback variances to both Kennedy Boulevard and the County Line Road. And the other building this, in this area have gotten variances as well. I think the Kentucky Fried Chicken is the only one that was close. And that's because it was built a long time ago when, when things were different and the area was different. If you're looking at the tax map, you can see to the north of us, uh, that the, the big lots are all apartments. And then you have Coventry Square, and then you have the whole, uh, residential area running down to the Central Business District. Uh, looking at the ordinance, I, I think it's important when we're looking at a B3 zone to look at the ordinance and the ordinance is set up and the zoning map is set up. Typical for, for townships, they have a B1 zone, which is neighborhood business. And that's something that's typical. You try to put neighborhood businesses so that people don't have to drive to the highways. Then we have a B2, which is a central business, which is something that's unique to Lakewood because we have the downtown area where the side setbacks are, are reduced and the parking, uh, is substantially reduced because you're in the Central Business District. Then you have the B3, which is highway business, which is what we're in. Uh, B4 is, is wholesale service. And you would think at that point, we're done. We, we don't need any more, but the board is all familiar. We go past that, we have a B5, which is highway development. Uh, B5A, also highway development. Uh, HD6 and HD7, which are highway developments. And, and what I'd like to point out is those all say development as opposed to the B3, which says highway business. So clearly the intent is to have businesses here, which is what we're trying to provide. We're not, we're not trying to put in a tall building. We're not trying to overbuild the site. We're trying to put in something that's a great ratable for this site, something that fits in with the area. Um, so if we look at, uh, Terry's report, uh, he, he starts out indicating the, the retail activities are permitted use. Uh, and, and then he, uh, item, zoning item two on page three indicates that we need a, uh, front yard setback from Kennedy of 9.5 feet. Uh, and, and we're proposing 16 feet to County Line Road. The 9.5 feet is to the, um, the columns on the front of the building. And if you looked at the architectural plans, there's jogs in the buildings, there's differences in height. Uh, there's a lot of glass on the building. It, it's going to be a beautiful building if the board acts favorably that is going to fit nice in the area and it's going to provide all those retail uses of, of a neighborhood business type of use. So I, I could argue that the, the columns are an architectural feature and we really don't have to count to there. But whether, I think whether we're asking for 9.5 feet front setback or 11.5 feet front setback, I think the board has to look at how it fits in the area. Uh, and, and that is, uh, what was shown on the aerial exhibit that was provided. Um, and when you look at that aerial exhibit, you look at our neighbors, uh, to the left and to the right, and they have cars parked along our, 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 uh, property line. Uh, and you look in the front and, and, well, both fronts, uh, and there's cars parked close to the road. We're proposing a parking lot that fits all of the vehicles that are needed. Uh, and, and I'm saying now, we're not going to ask for a, uh, a parking variance for two reasons. Uh, first of all, it, it would not be appropriate. It, we're putting in a building, we should provide sufficient parking. Secondly, it would be crazy because the board wouldn't grant it. So we're indicating that 57 parking spaces are provided, uh, and 57 are required. And, and I'll, I'll discuss that more when I get to that part of the report. Um, we, we should look at also for a, a B3 zone. The permitted uses are, uh, all the uses permitted in the B1 zoning district. Uh, additionally, uh, places of worship, schools, uh, community healthcare facilities. And then there's conditional uses that allow, uh, motels, townhouses, uh, and, and digital billboards. None of that fits here. What fits here is what we're proposing. Uh, the, the ordinance allows us to go higher than the one-story. We're not doing that because we want to put what makes sense for the area consistent with the conditional uses that the, the governing body adopted for that corridor. It, it's a corridor that's heavily residential, uh, and, and it needs these retail opportunities and, and job opportunities as well.
Brian, you're not, you're not doing higher because you don't have the parking space, not because you can't, not because you don't want it.
Well, we could, we could go higher and, and park underneath it and do all kinds of, of things that don't make sense for the area.
Then you wouldn't have so much.
We balanced. We balanced a one-story building with what fits with the parking.
Exactly. So not, not because you don't want it, because you want to make it for the area, you just don't have the park. If you make parking underneath the building, then again, you're losing a, a full floor, so you're only staying with one floor.
Well, we could.
Be very generous, you put it down.
Well, we could, we could go three stories, uh, and, and have one story of parking and, and we could do something that doesn't fit to, to try to overbuild the site, but I don't think that would be good for anything. I don't think it's the kind of uses that, that, uh, would work there. And I don't think it's the kind of uses that we would want to see there. So it's, it's possible to fit more parking on. It's possible to have a site that generates more traffic while still being a, a permitted use. So I could say this is a, a byright application, but that, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to convince the, the board that it's a unique property, that the setbacks that are proposed for this are for a highway business type of use, that, that more envisions a property sitting on Route 9. Because if you look at the, the other, um, highway business type of uses, we have them. Lakewood's kind of broken up to, into four areas where you have Route 9 goes down the middle and, and you have the east and west side that are broken into two areas by maybe the railroad tracks and, and, uh, and the, uh, and, and the downtown area. So that you have concentrated areas of residential and then you have business opportunities mixed in with that. And, and that's what we're, we're dealing with. So we're asking for variances that I think at face value sound like they're, they're rather big. When you look at how it fits in with the neighborhood, it's my opinion that, that they're not that big. Uh, and that the, the building, if the board acts favorably, will be a good ratable. Uh, and, and it'll be a benefit to everybody involved. Um, the second item in Terry's report is the minimum side yard setback. Uh, and we're asking for 10, where 30 feet is what's required. Again, if you look at the other buildings in this area, uh, it's very rare that anybody has the 30 feet. Uh, and, and 30 feet doesn't, it, it isn't needed. Uh, what we're proposing is a building that fits in in between two existing, uh, commercial buildings uh, and provides adequate parking for it. Uh, item four is the maximum building coverage. Uh, we're asking for 30.5%, where 25% is allowed. Uh, and, and it's my testimony that the benefits of providing a good ratable, uh, something that has the, um, um, the, the parking and something that complies with, uh, uh, items in the master plan, which, which I'll get to, uh, makes sense. And then the last thing that's indicated is, is for the number of off-street parking. Uh, and, and what the RVE reports indicates is that because of the, if we add a shade tree and utility easement, a couple of the parking spaces would be in a shade tree and utility easement. And this is not an uncommon issue to have parking in a shade tree and utility easement. And there's nothing in the ordinance that indicates you can't have parking in a shade tree and utility easement. We're providing a building where we're going to have nice landscaping. If you look at our neighbors, uh, on both sides of us, uh, they have parking in what would be a shade tree and utility easement if they have it. And, and if we look at the purpose of the, the shade tree and utility easement, it's, it, a lot of it is for the utilities, uh, so that there's a place for the utilities to run. This is a developed site, the utilities are there. Uh, and with respect to the landscaping, we've provided a landscaping plan that we think this is going to be landscaped as nicely, uh, as any of the buildings in the area. And, and based on the architecturals, we, we think it's going to be the nicest building in the area. Um, looking at the, um, uh, master plan that I referenced of 2017 with respect to, uh, the reasons for these variants from both a C1 hardship standpoint and a C2, um, benefits outweigh the detriment standpoint. Uh, on page seven, under the vision statement, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. So we're taking a KFC that, that never really was, uh, a winner in, in Lakewood and we're replacing it with retail stores that will serve the needs of the residents. Uh, on page eight of the same report, um, um, uh, under the master plan, uh, strategies, it, it indicates strengthen and direct development toward existing communities. And I pointed out before, the apartments that are there and Coventry Square that's there and the residential that's there, uh, to the south, it, it's my testimony that this does this. Uh, seven on that same page is encourage the redevelopment of existing underutilized sites. And, and this KFC has been underutilized in Lakewood for many years. Uh, on page 23 of the same report, it talks about traffic congestion and a shortage of parking. And the indication is that this can be done in part with sound land use planning that promotes reduced reliance on private vehicles through compact development footprints. And, and this will be caused, it has a neighborhood where people can walk it. It will accommodate that goal of the master plan. Then we look at the municipal land use law, NJAC 40 colon 55 D2, under the purpose of the act. Uh, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that, that this does that. Uh, G is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. And it's my testimony that this does that, that there is a need for this, um, uh, retail use on this particular site uh, based on the surrounding properties. Um, the, uh, the hardship, as I indicated, is that if you take a property that's 200 foot deep and you take 50 feet off one side and 50 feet off the other, uh, you, you eliminated a substantial portion of the property. And then you create a situation where the parking lots are separated as they are in, in the building to the west, which doesn't work well either. Here we've limited to one driveway entrance on each road. There are controlled, uh, exits and, and entrances. Uh, and it, and it provides traffic safety that is indicated in the traffic report that was submitted is that it, it works and, and creates a situation that from the morning, uh, peak hour trips, uh, we, we don't have an increase and, and the other ones are, uh, as, as in a lot of places in Lakewood, they're, they're heavily traveled intersections. But this is going to be taking people that aren't necessarily just making a trip there and it's going to have walking traffic. So if we look to the C2 variances, uh, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. And, and this certainly is a piece of property in between two other developed sites, in between two, uh, major county roadways. I, I think it's a, is as specific a piece of property as you can find. The purposes of the municipal land use law would, would be advanced, which is what I indicated. Uh, the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to public good. And it's my testimony that there's going to be negligible impact on the public good. We're providing sufficient parking. We're providing a building that fits in and is compatible with the area and it meets the, the goals of the master plan. Uh, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And, and this is consistent with the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And the benefits will substantially outweigh the detriment. And, and it's my testimony that this does that. If we continue to design waivers, uh, as far as providing, uh, street trees and shade trees and utility easements, we will provide the shade tree and utility easements. And the shade tree and utility easements will run along the, uh, both frontages. Uh, and it will provide an area, uh, if the utilities ever had to be moved further back because what we're doing is we're dedicating six feet along East County Line so that the county can widen. I, I don't expect to see that in, in, in any hurry, but this property will give that land so that it works. Uh, uh, and the shade tree and utility easement will go, uh, spaces, but it leaves other areas where, uh, landscaping can and is proposed. Uh, and it provides an area that if utilities have to be moved at a future time to accommodate the road widening, there's an area that'll be dedicated for that. Uh, the number two on that, that says a design waiver is required from providing necessary landscape buffers. If you look at, uh, the aerial that was submitted and you figure that the landscape buffer to the east would be just to these cars that are already planted there and to the west would be to the loading area, uh, it's compatible uses. My testimony is there's no need for buffering. The Lakewood ordinance under buffering in Section 18 dash 803, uh, E2 says buffering shall be required when topographical or other barriers do not provide reasonable screening and when board determines that there is a need to shield the site from adjacent properties. My testimony, there's certainly no need to shield this site from adjacent properties. Um, the other items in, in Terry's report, uh, we will certainly comply with. It was the comment on, uh, page number eight that there's, seems to be insufficient room for the light pole foundations. Uh, it's my testimony that we can make that work and as part of resolution compliance, we will make that work. Uh, Terry asked for testimony on the architecturals, which I've already touched on. And it's going to be a combination of materials. It, it has jogs in it. Uh, it, it's done with a modern flare, uh, that's going to fit, fit very nicely in the area. And everything else in the report, we will comply with. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Flannery?
Yeah, I can, Chairman, if I could, Brian, I'm not sure if you testify on loading.
If I testify on what?
Loading.
On, on loading.
On loading. There, there is a loading area that's shown in the front. In front of the building jogs and it accomplishes two things. It shows a loading area in the first jog and it provides for handicapped accessible parking in the second jog.
Right, and that's adequate for the sizes of the trucks that.
Yes, for the type of uses that are proposed.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Please, please, David, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, question. Do you have a entrance exit coming on to Kennedy and on the County Line, correct?
One on each, yes.
Right, now, Kennedy and County Line are fairly heavily trafficked, especially at rush hour.
Yes.
Can those, that exit or entrance, could that be made into right turns?
Uh, that would be up to the, uh, county engineer to determine. We would certainly recommend that it be right in and right out.
Oh, I feel like you're looking to possibly the right turns, especially as someone mentioned, there may be in the future some widening and you need it even more at that time.
We, we agree, we agree with you, but unfortunately it's a county road, so it would be subject to the county engineer approving that. We would go along with that, the request it. But what Brian is saying is that because it's a county road, it's subject to the county engineer department saying they agree or they don't agree. But we think it's a good idea and we, and we think it's a very good idea, frankly. But unfortunately, we have to say.
Could I suggest possibly, possibly sending a, some correspondence? Could I suggest possibly sending some correspondence? I don't see any reason why they would turn it down.
We agree, but unfortunately, they control it.
We would agree if the board acts favorably that we would make that request to the county engineer.
Thank you. I'll second that.
And it appears that you've got a traffic island on, I think it's the Kennedy side of the road, but you don't have a traffic island, no, I'm sorry, wrong, on the county line.
County line road, yes.
So why the difference?
County line road is a much heavier trafficked road. And again, the geometry is subject to county approval. So we, I don't think you need the island to make it right in and right out. If the county feels we need an island, we can certainly put an island there as well.
But would you be, I mean, counsel has pointed out in previous testimony that Kennedy was called Speedway, because I guess...
That was before John Kennedy was assassinated.
Okay, so cars are faster now. Would it make sense to put, I'm not suggesting this, would it make sense to put an island? I mean, Kennedy's pretty busy too, and I would hate to have somebody trying to, I don't know, waiting on Kennedy to make a left into this development.
I agree with Bruce.
If the board acts favorably, we will make that proposal to the county engineer. And I don't see why he would not agree, but he has surprised me in the past, so I can't speak for him.
Okay. Brian, this is an odd question, but on the Google aerial, there's a bunch of random cars parked in the dust of your...
Trespassers.
...green scape. Like, what's that about?
They're trespassers that found a place to park in Lakewood where nobody bothers them.
But that's like they live there, or these are people visiting Stitch and Tommy? What are those?
I don't know. I saw that as well, but I'm telling you that they'll be gone when we develop the site.
So Terry, so Brian's testimony is 57 parking stalls is adequate for this retail use. Do you agree with that?
Based upon the testimony relative to what they are showing with the landscaping and easements, yes.
Okay, generally speaking, how many, do the math for me, how many parking stalls per thousand square feet of retail is this?
Five.
So it is five per thousand?
Yes.
Terry, you agree with that?
Yes. And I believe based upon that ratio, Brian, you have adequate parks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No, this is definitely, you know, a beautiful project, and it's a handsome, my only concern, I can't really articulate it, it's pretty squishy. I mean, you're probably doubling or maybe even tripling the footprint of the existing KFC. You're right. It just seems a little squishy. It's a beautiful development, and I certainly support it. I mean, Terry, help me articulate what the two squishy is and what the detriment of that would be.
Mr. Chairman, can I chime in?
Please.
And if we look at the neighborhood, if you zoom out on Google Maps, you can see there's not even one building with so much footprint. I mean, the Good Friend Electric obviously is a lot smaller. The building to the east of it is bigger than Good Friend Electric, but it's still not as big as this building is going to be. It is going to be a gigantic building. Again, it needs to be retail. I think the use is perfect, and it's a nice area, but I think the building is going to be huge. My biggest problem is it's going to become another street. So there's going to be Clifton, there's going to be this building, and then there's going to be Lexington for cars to go through back and forth. It's a nice, beautiful opening. Clifton has a red light, Lexington is busy, I think they have a red light, I'm not sure. This is going to be another drive-through. So I think we have to reconfigure the parking lot to avoid that, to make it more difficult.
I mean, I've lived in Lakewood 23 years, I've never used the KFC as a cut-through. I've never thought about it.
Is it open now? Is it open now, or it's closed?
Yeah. No, I mean, you can look at the aerial, you can drive right through. I'm not worried about that, it just seems like, you say, it's a lot of building for...
It's a lot of parking lots on both ends.
Yeah. So that would be my, I don't know if, how many, how many feet long is this, Brian?
166.
And so the distance from the setback from Kennedy and the setback from county line is how much?
The Kennedy setback is 16 feet after we gave him six additional feet. So it's 22 feet from where the property line is now.
And they need 50.
And the ordinance says 50, yes.
Correct. So it's more than, like 60% are asking for a variance.
Yes. And I was hopeful that my testimony on the C1 and C2 variances was compelling, and the board understood why we were doing that. I think when you just look at a footprint, it makes it look bigger than when you actually see the building. And that's why the architect has those steps in the building and the different facade heights to give it a different look. And, you know, we're looking in just these two blocks, but if you look across the street to the north, there's big buildings over there. I don't think this is going to look out of place. And if you talk about being close to the street on the corner of East County Line and Clifton, that building is probably right on the property line. And I've been through there many times, and it looks appropriate to me. It's a use for this type of an area that looks appropriate.
So Brian, I'll just give my opinion, that building has never looked appropriate to me. You've got this little truncated rump of a parking lot right next to TD Bank. I always thought it was way underparked, and I don't know who's project, was that one of your projects, Brian?
Underparked, I would tend to agree with you. I'm assuming that they get a lot of walk-up traffic, or people are parking in other people's parking lots. So underparked, no question about it. We don't have an underparked problem, we're providing sufficient parking.
Yeah.
Excuse me, chairman?
Please, Terry.
Getting back to your first question about it being squishy for lack of a better term.
I'm talking with scrunchy. Go ahead.
Scrunchy, squishy, that's another good engineering term. Just looking at the impervious coverage, I mean, obviously, the zone requirement's 25, they are requesting a little more than 30%. It's over what the zone allows, and Brian's made a case in terms of all the variance relief. If anything would change, if that would come down a little bit. Now, the other factor on the board's part, this is the redevelopment of a site, you'll have additional costs here that are going to be incurred, including but not limited to demo of the building, removal of an old parking lot utility. So, you know, I'm sure that this building has to be a certain size for the project to be financially viable. I would ask the question, is there any latitude between the 25 zoning and the 30.5 allowed?
The opposite. Will says.
No.
Brian, I think that's...
Well, that's really not an engineering issue. I don't know if Mr. Penzer has spoken to the applicant, if he has any...
Mr. Kot, you're listening, are you not? Mr. Kot?
Yeah, muted.
Okay, you may be unmuted. The question that's being directed will be here, because this is not a legal question, this is not an engineering question. The board's saying they like the project, but they would like it to get it reduced approximately 5% if possible, so that it would be in compliance, so that variance wouldn't be there. So they're asking you if you would agree to make the place a little bit smaller, like drop it by a thousand, I don't know, Brian?
5% would be 560 feet.
How much would that be to be able to comply to give Mr. Kot the ability to answer that question?
5% would be 560 square feet that we would be reducing it by. And that would be almost 10 feet of less of building.
Okay, so Mr. Kot, that's the question they're asking you. I apologize, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but the board is asking that they would feel comfortable if you would reduce it 560 square feet, which would be on that. My recommendation is if you could, I think it would make them feel happier.
The only problem, I would be willing to, I would be willing to do that. My only concern is that if you take off 10 feet of the building, so you're losing one complete store, because after there's not enough frontage for each of the stores, of the remaining stores, there's not enough frontage. So you're taking, instead of having six stores, you're getting only five stores, even if you take off only 10 feet, and you're losing of the experience and of the development that we...
Hold on one minute, hold on one minute. Mr. Penzer, your client is now testifying. I mean, give a little latitude, because you can't...
He's not testifying.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
He is, because he's saying he would lose buildings and he would lose stores. All I have to do is put him on the road, and then he can testify.
So put him on the road, but he would affirm it rather than swear. So let him affirm you, Mr. Kot, so you can answer the question.
Sir, please raise your hand. Do you affirm the testimony you'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You have to say yes.
And raise your hand.
And you have to say yes.
Yes.
Okay, now you can answer the question. Mr. Jackson's question was, what you were talking about was testimony, or so therefore he wanted to swear you in. Now you can go finish.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying that it's not going to be economically viable by losing a store. That's what you're saying, is that correct?
Okay, so 10, it's fine, I'm fine, it's fine, if it's, if you want, yeah, 10 feet, so, 10 by 26. Okay, I'm ready to give up for 10 feet.
Okay, so he's agreed to reduce it so that whatever, we do this, whatever the configuration needs to be, so that he can try to salvage the store, but he will be at the 25% mark. Is that fair enough to...
Well, he's going to do the reduction of 560 square feet off the building.
Correct. He'll make it work that you should try not to lose the store, but he will go to be, it'll be 25% to Terry's...
Hey, we're reducing, hey, we're reducing the building size by 5%. So we're going to reduce the building size by 5%. That's what we're agreeing.
I agree.
Well, Brian and Abe, I mean, to me and other people can chime in, I guess I'm not so concerned about shrinking the size of the square footage. And Terry, I appreciate your input, but now I've been thinking, but the real issue is the setbacks. It's almost an aesthetic thing. The building is a beautiful building, and I think it's going to be great in the area. It's just so close to the roads on each side, it just, to me, that's almost a more important issue to bring in.
Okay, so we want to make it deeper, make it deeper. But yeah, deeper isn't going to work with the parking. So what we've indicated is we would take 10 feet off the length of the building.
Thank you. Would that affect the front yard setback, though? Mr. Flannery?
The front yard setback would be increased on each road by 5 feet.
Show on your diagram where you would be doing the reduction.
We would take 10 feet off this side, and we would slide the building to put it in the middle.
Mr. Stern, does that address your concern with the front yard setback? What would the front yard...
Basically, we're five feet further away from Kennedy and county line on each side.
Correct.
That would make me happy, I'm one of, I don't know, six or seven, but...
You're one of five, happens to be.
Okay, so I got 20% of the votes, but yes, that I think would be good. And Brian, listen, if you need, I'm less concerned about the percentages, so if you need an extra percent, I personally would feel comfortable you going to 26% or whatever.
Brian, now that we're going to take away that five, that's going to make the front yard setback, will make that, that will make it to 25 feet, requesting a variance of 25 feet, and how much is going to be backyard, the backyard setback?
The rear yard setbacks are going to stay where they are, because all, the agreement that we're making is that we'll take 10 feet off the length of the building and provide five additional feet of front setback.
Let me try it again, slowly, okay? So currently, we have, we're providing, I think, 15, approximately 16 feet in the front where 50 is required, correct?
Yes.
Okay, how much are we currently providing in the back, and how much is required?
See, you're throwing me off with the back, just we have two fronts.
The rear.
So we had...
The county line.
Kennedy Boulevard.
Next to Lot 6.
Okay, so I'm going to do it slowly again. Kennedy Boulevard, the building needs 50 feet. County line to the building, how much does that need?
County line to the building also needs 50 feet. We proposed 16 after a six-foot dedication. So we gave away six feet of our property, and once we gave away six feet, we're going another 16. We're going to add five feet to each of them, so the 16 will go to 21.
So the county line will have 21 where 50 is required?
Yes.
And Kennedy will have 21 where 50 is required, approximately the same?
Kennedy, we had set up as 11.5 to the building. The columns stuck out another two feet, so the 11.5, we would be adding five feet to it. So that would be 16.5.
Where 50 is required?
Correct.
And that is going to be 21 where 50 is required?
Correct.
Okay, and if we were to make it the same size as the building to the east of it, what would that mean?
It would mean that the project doesn't work, and...
The deal's over.
Yeah. Time, I think it's less important that the rear setback between this building and Lot 6, I think it's a 6. I don't think that's essential, there's nobody looking out there.
I'm just trying to see the image of driving down, or the image of the entire area, this is going to be a lot bigger.
Mr. Sable, maybe I could help you. Look, if you want to have an image of what you have, look at the buildings to, if you're standing in front of them, to the left, look at Stitch and Sew, look at the dock, all of them are parking in the front, they're backing into county line road, that doesn't...
Not necessarily, not necessarily. The parking lot by Stitch and Sew is very big, and I make beautiful U-turns, and you can make some nice moves in there with the cars. You don't have to back into county line at all. I've been to that property multiple times.
I have to tell you that I...
Time, you got to agree, this is a much prettier building than Stitch and Sew, no offense.
It's going to be gorgeous.
But it won't be, we can't, you can cut it, you know, when you do surgery and cut a little bit, at some point, the patient dies.
Okay, we don't want that, Mr. Penzer.
I just want to put on the record exactly how much...
We're trying to show a cooperative, we understand your concern, but please understand our concern.
I do, I want to be clear of the variance requested.
Yes, I do understand it, and I respect what you're saying. What I'm saying to you is, you, and you're right, you're the one that has to make the decision ultimately. But we're saying to you, when I started my statement, this is urban renewal in the area, and this is a very big cost to knock down a building, to go and to make it happen over here. I apologize, I don't mean in any way to be disrespectful. Unfortunately, either it works or it doesn't. For you, we're saying that we're giving, want to give a beautiful building to the perfect use. Unfortunately, we came down a little bit what we could, and we got rid of one variance. We can't solve the other one. We've solved a little bit, giving five or 10 feet more, but we can't do more than that. I apologize.
You know what, and I think the board has had an issue with this. The problem is sometimes we break into what's like a, almost like a deliberation format, and then it becomes a debate with the applicant. I mean, you've heard the feedback from the board, you've heard what the concerns are. Make your adjustments and your concessions. Uh, make, make your adjustments and your concessions and then the board votes the way it votes. Um, it, it's.
That's fine.
You're not necessarily gonna get unanimous and, um, you're not necessarily going to get approved either. So you, you just have to, uh, listen to the comments and then lay your bets down and see what happens. So, uh, why don't we just go forward with Mr. Stern? Do any other board members have comments or questions?
I'm concerned for the parking, if it's gonna work, that the two sides, or I guess the west side, we're gonna have 18 cars stacked in, nine on each side. Just wondering if that's actually gonna work? Anybody going in and out of that, that space? I can, I can think of a couple of, uh, developments or, or retail businesses in Lakewood that have similar and, and it's very, very challenging to go in and out. Maybe we can suggest a, a entrance at the most, at Kennedy Boulevard and County Line. Instead of having that island in the middle, maybe do it one way in, one way out, maybe, or maybe a different idea if any of the board, board members have.
Excuse me, Chairman. Excuse me, Chairman, it's Terry. Um, I, I'm, I'm listening to the discussion about parking. Uh, just something to bring up, uh, I believe the applicants agreed to reduce the building, Brian. I think you said approximately 500 some feet?
560 square feet, which would, would be, uh, two plus parking spaces less needed.
That's where I'm heading.
We'd, we'd certainly rather leave extra parking spaces in, um.
I, I think, I think Mr. Sable's question was the design of it, not the number. And this is on my pay grade, but Terry, do you have any thoughts about how this parking lot is configured?
I think the parking lot functions as designed. Um, you have two-way accesses here, Brian, have been 24-foot car ways. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it meets design standards. Um, as far as the orientation or the one-way through or whatever, that's really gonna be driven by, uh, the county along County Line Road more than anything. Um, my, my personal opinion, uh, I think the 5% building reduction, uh, is a reasonable compromise. Uh, ju, ju, just looking at the parking, as long as people follow laws, uh, it, it should function as laid out.
Okay.
I was trying to dance around that one, Chairman.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, so.
My last question, my last question regarding the trash. Uh, it, it's stacked in right after a parking spot, a parking spot. So if somebody leaves the car over there overnight or somebody leaves it after hours by mistake, then there's no garbage removal. By mistake, not intentionally. Somebody's car broke down and is there a beyond tip and, and, and they're coming back, must be on tip. But those two days, there's not gonna be any parking there, because the truck, the trucks that go in there, you need to remove a couple of spots.
Interesting point.
Well, with the reduction in the building, we can remove the, the spots and we can, uh, leave the pavement the way it is, cross-hatch that as no parking. Uh, we, we do know that it's Lakewood and if all the other parking spaces are taken, somebody's gonna park there anyway, but at least that won't be somebody leaving their car there over a holiday because they know it would get towed if it's over a holiday. That would be a worst-case situation. Um.
Can we put it on the side of the building somewhere now that we're reducing the size?
Not really, because you wouldn't have access, Time. Brian, why don't you, why don't you do that? Why don't you take one of those spots and cross-hatchet and put coronavirus storage area? That way, I think, Time, we still have an extra parking spot and Mr. Sable's valid concern is addressed.
Yes, we, we would agree to that.
Okay.
Can we put it in the corner instead of one of the?
Does that mean I gotta be, I gotta be courting from that too?
I'll give you professional courtesy on that one.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Time, last question, then we wanna move on. You good?
I reserve the question for later.
Okay, good. Okay, um, hearing no more questions from our esteemed board members. Are there any members of the public via email, I guess? Are there any comments on this one? Ally, I don't think so.
I did not get any, um, by email. I did receive a call yesterday from a neighbor who had received the notice. Um, she had some questions about how to access the plans. Um, she did have my phone number as well as my email and I never heard back from her, so I assume everything was okay with her. That was Ms. Ringel, who owns a number of properties in the area.
Got it. Okay, well, um, things are on the web and, um, I had an opportunity to be heard and if she's not here, then we can't infer any comments. So, um, I guess we would close the public comment section, right? Good? Okay, and then now we call for a motion?
Correct.
Do we have a motion? Don't all jump out at once.
This is Justin. Yeah, this is Justin. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, with reducing the 5% of, uh, building coverage.
Good. Just, I guess, are we clear, Terry and Brian, that 5% also means five feet extra of the side setbacks?
That's based upon Brian's testimony, correct, Jerry?
You're muted, Brian.
Reducing the building area by 5% is, is almost 10 feet. Our agreement was that we would reduce the length of the building by 10 feet.
That's most important.
And the, uh, square footage of the building by 5%, both. So the board knows what they're getting.
And you'll, and you'll discuss with the county putting a second traffic island on wherever the other side was.
We will submit it to the county with that and, and make the request. And if they have any comments, we'll express that this was the Lakewood Planning Board's preference.
Okay, we have a motion?
Applicant agreed to 5%. We should put that in also.
No, 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 no.
Let them do their thing, Time. Let them do their thing. If they wanna have five squishier stores, they're gonna have five better.
Guys, 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 with all, with all due respect, I, there's a motion on the floor. Um, the reduction is approximately 10 feet in building length. We reduced, the motion was to reduce the building coverage by 5%. That was the motion. The amount of stores is gonna be up to the applicant. I don't know how big the stores are.
Right, right. And, and listen, Justin, it's your motion. Who seconded it?
I second.
Dave seconded, so we have a motion. We have a sec. So I think we are ready to vote. Ally, would I could do a roll call?
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Flanshaw?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I, I have one question for Mr. Penzer. Is that a hairbrush you've been like playing with for the whole?
I have not been allowed out of the house for two months. I am dying to go to a barber.
I keep seeing you looking at a hairbrush. Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just.
I feel your pain, Abe.
I think you look very handsome, but.
Thank you. I, I look like Rip Van Winkle and I'd rather not be, try to be honest, okay? But thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Kot, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, board, we do have minutes and bills, um, that require motions. I'm sorry, I heard someone say something, but I lost my video.
I'll move on the, the minutes and the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. There's a question on that.
Second by Justin.
All in favor? Any objections? Great, thank you. Um, we do have another meeting next Tuesday, so I hope to see you all then.
Ally?
Ally?
Thank you. Have a great night.
Mr. Garfield?
I got, I got two papers in the mail from, uh, Remington. Uh, SP 2370 and 74. Is that for next meeting?
Yes, it is next week.
Because I got no, uh, diagrams. It would just be typed up papers.
Okay, I will, uh, confirm with Mr. Lyons's office that they have sent those.
Okay, fine. Thank you and have a good week.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, we did it.
You go to Mr. Stern?